I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Before we begin taking up the matters on our agenda, I'd like to review a few things with everyone first. To your left is the fire exit. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to the exit. Do not use the elevator. Use either the front or the back stairs to leave the building. Our meetings are being recorded by our secretary, Michelle, for the purpose of a record, not as a verbatim transcript. So when you come to the microphone to speak, it's important that you identify yourself each time so that she knows and has a record of who is speaking. After the case has been called, the applicant or their representatives will be called to the podium. The applicant and their representative will be sworn. They identify themselves, state their address, and then present their case. We take up the items as they appear on our agenda. Extra copies of the agenda are on the table by the door into the room. During the applicant's presentation, the members of the board have an opportunity to ask any questions that they may have. Once all the questions have been asked and the applicant has stated what they wish to state, we will then open the hearing up to public input. First, we will call upon those who wish to speak in favor of the application. Then we will call those who wish to speak in opposition to the application. Once you've spoken during the public hearing, that is the only opportunity you have to speak. So once you've said what you have to say, please sit down so we can hear from everybody else. Once the public input portion of the hearing has been completed, the applicant or their representative will have an opportunity to readdress the board, to answer any questions or concerns that were raised during the public input portion, and respond to anything that came up. Once that's concluded, then the hearing will be closed, and we'll move to the next case on the agenda. Once we've completed all of the cases on the agenda, the board will take a break of 10 minutes or so, and then we'll return to deliberate on the cases in the order of the applicants that are still present as they appear on the agenda. So if the applicant for the first case is not present, but the applicant for the second case is present, we would take that case first. And then when we've completed all the cases in the orders that appear on the agenda, with applicants still present, we'll go back and take up the cases that don't have applicants present in the order that they appear on the agenda. During the deliberative portion of our meeting, there is no further public input that is allowed. You're welcome to stay and listen to the deliberation, or you're welcome to go home and turn on Channel 12, and you can watch it there. Or you can call into the town tomorrow to find out what our decision was. A couple of things, other things before we get underway. First, I want to apologize for not being able to be here last month, but I got tied up with some work matters. Second, those of you who may not be aware of it, tomorrow is actually the day on which the Second Continental Congress in 1776 adopted the resolution that these colonies are and of right ought to be free and independent states. So John Adams wrote home on the third to Abigail, saying that that day would be celebrated for years to come with fireworks, picnics, prayer meetings, and things like that. So as you go through your day tomorrow, keep in mind that tomorrow is the day that we actually voted to become independent. The fourth is the day we approved the wording of the declaration, and that seems to have eclipsed the actual amendment. I always like to throw in those historical things once a year when the opportunity presents itself. Last but not least, I'd ask for your prayers and consideration for Mr. Russell, who's not able to be with us tonight. Mr. Thomas, Russell Thomas. He's not able to be with us tonight because he has some health issues that he's dealing with, and we wish him the best. So I think that covers everything that I wanted to cover preliminarily, and now we can take up the first case on our agenda.
There's one other thing.
Oh.
There's going to be a contest at the end of the night to see which of us has the nicest sport coat on.
All right. Do not adjust your TV set. Everything is fine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item on the agenda this evening is case number ZB 1307-1. Upon the matter of request by Jennifer Hartman for area variances, to maintain a six-foot-high solid wood front and side yard fence exceeding maximum allowable height, type of fence, excuse me, type of front yard fence, and to maintain fence with unfinished side facing adjoining property on premises 300 Rock Beach Road in an R1 residential district.
Good evening.
And you are?
I am Jennifer Hartman, owner of 300 Rock Beach Road.
All right. If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
So what I'm asking for is exactly what was just stated. I'm asking to maintain a six-foot-high fence on the eastern border of my property. And I would just note by, I know you've got a packet and pictures, but I would start out by saying that the eastern border of my property is a really unique border. It's a deeded right-of-way, so it's a walkway down to the beach area for use by folks on the other parts of the street, not on the lakefront. The other side of the deeded right-of-way, which I think is about 40 feet wide, is kind of a berm. There's no house, or no view, or nothing there to look into the right-of-way. So that's my request, to have a six-foot-high fence, which is really more for privacy than anything else. And also, the nicer portion of the fence to be facing my property instead of facing away, since facing away, nobody ever sees it unless you're walking to the beach, and facing my property is where pedestrians, cars, anybody normally in visible eyesight of that fence would see it.
I have one question. When I stopped by your place the other day to look at the fence, I could not find on display anywhere the sign that said that the property is the subject of a public hearing.
Yeah, I apologize. I didn't, I thought the town would come and put that. I don't live there full-time, and so I didn't receive anything, or no, just the sign had to go up, or I had to do that.
The problem that I have is that we, I believe, and Michelle will correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that by custom at least, if not a requirement, that letters get sent to neighbors within a certain radius of the property. But the only other means that the general people who would be passing by or who live in the neighborhood and don't fall within that radius would have, knowing that there's any application pending, is the sign. And since that, since notice is an essential prerequisite to being able to take official action, it's not really fair, as a governmental body in my view, that we take action if we haven't properly notified the public of the existence of an application so that anyone who has an interest in the application can learn more about it, know of it, and if they wish, come and address us with any concerns or questions that they might have. So what I would like to ask of you is that you agree to table your request for a month, and that you get the sign from the town and make sure that it is posted at the property. I have noticed on a number of occasions in the last couple of years that the signs are difficult to find, and it seems to me that perhaps the only way we have of being able to deal with it is to adjourn it to make sure that the sign is complied, because notice is a fundamental part of what this democracy is all about. So do you have any problem with that?
No, none at all.
Okay. In the meantime, of course, the fence is up, so it won't pose any practical hardship to you, right?
Correct.
All right. Anyone else have any other questions? Was there anyone here who did wish to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here who wished to speak in opposition to this application? All right, then but for the sign, we'll consider the hearing closed, and we'll put it over to next month.
I think maybe you ought to keep the hearing open, because if someone sees that sign and then comes in, they would have an opportunity to...
Well, I was going to reopen it next month.
Reopen, either way.
We'll keep the hearing open and adjourn it to next month. Thank you.
I will be sure a sign is there, and see you in August.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next matter.
Are you going to make a motion now or after?
Later. We can deliberate on that.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1307-2. Upon the matter of request by Jason and Amy Flack for area variances, to install a three-and-a-half-foot-high wooden picket front yard fence exceeding maximum allowable linear footage, and an eight-foot-high arbor exceeding maximum allowable height on premises 285 Avondale Road in an R2 residential district.
Hello.
And you are?
I am Jason Flack of 285 Avondale Road.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that everything you say today will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. And you're looking for?
Yes, a 40-inch fence, was it? 38-inch fence? We have a more than half-acre lot of land where we're at, which is a humongous lot of land. We also have a two-and-a-half-story house, which is the largest house on the entire block. We recently obtained permission to put up a six-foot fence in the backyard, and when we did that, we took down the short fence that we wanted to utilize in our front yard. We intend to not close in our front yard. There's going to be an eight-foot opening on both the, what would it be, east and west sides, as well as the arbor in the front, so it will not be closed in. We also feel like an eight-foot arbor is only fair for somebody who's six feet four inches.
Now, the eight-foot height, is that because it's in the front yard, or is that applicable anywhere?
I think it's the front yard.
Because it's the front yard?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
So the fence that you replaced with the six-foot fence, you're going to reuse?
Yes, it's just, you know, the correct height for a front yard. It's a Gothic stockade-type style. We're going to paint it white because it was a little old, and it's just with a limit of, what was it, 42 linear feet? 42 linear feet, when you have half an acre, just would be, 32, yeah, 32 linear feet when you have a half acre would be, you'd almost not even notice the fence. So we wanted to go beyond that to utilize the fence.
Now, with your application, you had a picture.
A drawing, yes.
Well, no, you had, you had a photograph of a house that had a fence kind of similar in...
Oh, that's kind of similar to what we were thinking, yes.
What you're talking about? Is that around here somewhere, or do you know where that is?
I have no clue. I would have to ask my wife.
All right, okay. And then this was the plan that you submitted of how you want to put the fence in with landscaping all around it?
Correct.
Okay.
Right now, as it stands, when we moved in, there was a dead tree in the front yard that we cut down the day we got the house, and there's literally nothing else in the front yard. It's just a big, you know, football field.
Anyone else have any questions? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Then we'll close the hearing, and we'll move on to our next case. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and I vote for your cope, Mr. Himmend.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That's because I don't have a vote.
I didn't know that.
Before you call the next case, I have, I am, have a longstanding acquaintance with the applicants, and therefore will not be participating in this hearing, so Mr. LaPerry will conduct the hearing in my absence. All right, Michelle.
Case number ZB 1307-3. Upon the matter of request by Susan M. Copp for an area variance to install a six-foot-high privacy side yard fence exceeding maximum allowable height on premises 902 Winona Boulevard in an R1 residential district.
Hello, gentlemen on board. My name is Douglas Copp. This is my wife, Susan. We reside at 902 Winona Boulevard.
Could you raise your right hands, please? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
We have submitted a letter of intent requesting a variance to the fence zoning code, and within the letter of intent, I ask that you please note my concern for my wife's safety. And there has been a recent action on June 22th demonstrating deliberate indifference, destroying a portion of our property, requiring that I call the Rondaque Police Department. So this is a concern, and this is one of the reasons we would like the side fence. The variance portion of the fence we are requesting to install will not block any sightlines from the windows of 908 Winona Boulevard, which is the adjoining property. The upper portion of the 66-inch fence is open. Only the lower section, under four foot, is solid. We have a diagram to hand out. I didn't think of this prior to the packet, but the diagram will demonstrate that there is 26 inches of space from the bottom of the window to the top of the solid portion of the fence. And also, our property is six inches lower in elevation than the adjoining property at 908. And any concerns with snow removal, right now, and currently, we have very good snow removal contractors, and they backblade everything out now, and they will continue to do so. And I didn't know if an additional diagram would be beneficial, we could hand it out, or if that's allowed.
Why don't you hand it across, please?
Okay. There's copies for everyone, too. Thank you, sir.
You had mentioned that you were going to match the fence that's around the other side of the house, the white fence with the lattice top?
Yes.
Okay. So the top will be open, or be able to be seen through some light?
Just the variance section that we're requesting up and beyond where the permit is allowed, this foot fence?
So the top of the lattice won't continue down by the garage?
No, that will match the existing other two sections of fence in the backyard.
Okay.
But the lattice, and the new lattice we're asking for the variance, that fence will match the look on the bottom solid section. We just want it to open on the top, just so it gives a more open view, but also we have concerns, so we thought that would be helpful.
Anybody have any questions?
How much is, will be left on the other property, do you know?
I'm sorry?
The exonerating property, how much land would be left there?
That, I'm not sure of. I don't know what the amount...
It would be a lawn mower with the fence up, right?
No. Well, no. I currently, I, up until recently, I actually, they were an elderly couple. I would cut the grass for them there, and I always got in, and a lot of times, their cars would be there, and I could get down through without a problem. There's plenty of them. I have to take about three swipes to cut that with a standard-sized lawnmower.
You're indicating this is more for your protection?
Well, we'd like to enhance our property also, but there are safety concerns and other issues concerning 908.
I noticed in your application, you have a number of signatures in support of your request. Did anybody oppose it? Did anybody tell you they thought it was a bad idea in terms of your neighbors?
No, they didn't.
All right, thanks.
Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of this application? Come forth. Is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition of this application? Seeing none, we'll close this part and move on to the next one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Himmend like to join us again?
Yeah, I'll get him.
Thank you.
Oh, nice, that was a nice job.
Thanks for the backup.
Case number, next on the agenda is case number ZB 1307-4. Upon the matter of request by Tom and Denise Marciano for an area variance to install an above-ground pool on a corner lot with less than required street-side, side-street-lined setback, excuse me, on premises 225 Rollinson Road in an R1 residential district.
Hello, my name is Denise Marciano.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
You're at 225 Rollinson Road.
Yes.
The application that you submitted indicates that the same request was before us in June of 2007, and we passed it with the condition that the pool will be no more than 20 feet from the building foundation towards Clinton Avenue.
Yes.
So is this the same application?
Same exact application.
All right. So do you have children?
Yes.
So for six years, you've deprived them of the benefit of an above-ground pool, huh?
Yes.
Even though we said it was okay?
I regret it, but...
All right. Let me ask you a simple question. Is anything different today than it was when we approved it in June of 2007?
No.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions? Is there any?
I note that there is signatures back from 2007, the neighbors. I mentioned this the other day when I was at their home, all still the same neighbors, and they all signed in favor.
These are the signatures from 2007, or they from now?
They're from 2007.
Oh, okay.
But those say, a couple of those people said that they received the postcard, and so everybody is aware, and the sign was up in my yard, so...
I saw that.
The gate that's on Clinton Avenue, it's still there.
Yes.
That'll be a locking device type of thing?
The chain link fence?
It's behind the bushes, it's in the middle.
Yes. It doesn't lock, it's just the latch that goes up and down? Does it need to be locked?
Well, I'm trying to find out if it's above ground, but...
It'll be taken care of by the building inspector.
Yeah, when you come, you'll get a building permit, and they'll outline for you the requirements of the fence in relationship to the pool.
Okay. Do you need to know any specifics about the pool, or the ladder, or the alarm?
I think we heard all that six years ago, right?
Okay.
And that's why I asked you if anything had changed, because if nothing has...
No, nothing has changed.
Changed that would...
Not far mine.
Provide any grounds for reconsidering, other than depriving your kids of that for six years. There's really nothing that we would be particularly concerned about, at least in my opinion.
Okay.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? We'll consider the hearing closed and move on to the next item on the agenda.
All right, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Next item is case number ZB 1307-5. Upon the matter of request by Leah Hill for a special use permit to harbor up to four hens with chicken coop pursuant to Section 235-70 of Town of Rondaque Code on premises 54 Russell Avenue in an R2 residential district.
Hi, I'm Leah Hill of 54 Russell Avenue.
All right, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm here requesting the permit for the four hens from the back of my backyard. It's about 200 feet or more from my house where the coop's going to be, and more than that, from my neighbors next door on either side. And then I have the plaza behind me, so I don't really have a real neighbor behind me. And I think you guys all have copies of the coop design. It has safety features built in, and features that make it easy to clean. And that's it.
All right, now, have you spoken to your neighbor, Ms. Harding?
Which, what is her number?
78.
Yes.
Okay. Because she sent us an email and raised some concerns and questions. She didn't, well, she indicated that she was against having livestock of this nature in that area. She expressed a concern about the fact that there are already rats that come into the backyard from the dumpsters in the plaza, which adjoins you, and she had questions about where the coop would be in the winter, whether it would be moved closer to the house, and she also raised concerns about just the general notion of having hens or chickens in the neighborhood. And this is, I think it's been about a year since our last chicken coop application.
Okay.
And I know that we have a lot of concerns, so if you could address for us what steps you're going to take to address those concerns, and how those concerns would be mitigated by whatever it is that you would like us to approve.
Okay, well, the coop is definitely going to stay in the very back of the backyard. It doesn't need to come any closer to the winter. I'll be able to get out there to feed them and give them food in the winter, because it's, you know, far enough, but not too far to not walk back there. And I don't know how, if you guys saw, but just behind the fence, if you look behind the fence, there's a drop-off of, I would say, at least six feet. So for rodents to come up from behind the plaza, they'd have to come up a straight wall. There's nothing for them to climb up.
Oh, they do that.
The fence.
They do.
They do. Well, rats are pretty disgusting, so I would do anything I could to make sure they weren't there. I would do any research, I would have to. I have a Karen Terrier, he's a dog, he's a rodent-killing-type dog, so if he did see any in the yard, I think he would address that. And aside from that, I did talk to several neighbors. Some of them signed a paper for me stating that they didn't care, and a lot of other neighbors, while we've, while I've been out doing yard work in the yard, have stopped and introduced themselves to me, and have discussed the sign with me and what it was about, and I told them, you know, why I wanted to do it. It's really important to me to know where my food comes from. I do want them for eggs. And as you guys also saw, I have a big garden, too, so I'd like to eat as much of my own food as possible. And, you know, I think it's far enough, like I said, far enough away from my house. There's ventilation built into the coop, so I think that would eliminate any issue of odor, and I would assume odor is what would attract rodents and such. So I think provided that's kept under control, I think the problem should be non-existent, really. And I've never even heard of anyone complaining about rats. I've never seen one. I hope I never do.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I'm curious if you've done any research over the health concerns that have been raised by the CDC, Center for Disease Control, over the harboring of chickens, particularly baby chickens?
I have done lots of research about chickens. I've definitely, I've read that it's best to keep them in their coop in their run, because that's going to prevent any sort of issues of disease or contamination of anything of that nature. I would let them out here and there, but strictly under my supervision. And then, you know, as far as the other health concerns go, I mean, it will definitely be cleaned very regularly, so I think that would eliminate all health concern.
The question that the CDC raised was the fact that chickens tend to carry salmonella. In fact, there's been several articles in the DNC on the topic, as well as some other publications that the CDC has put out, and that's one of the concerns that I have. I should also tell you, when I was a young guy many years ago, I had chickens out in the country, and I guarantee you, chickens attract rats. And that is a real concern, because rats like to get into chicken coops. And as I say, when I was young, for sport, we used to go shoot the rats. So that is something you have to be very conscientious about, our rodents, as one of your neighbors indicated, they're already in the neighborhood, and she sees that moving on to the chicken coop. And as I say, I do think that could be a potential major issue for you.
I don't know that it makes a difference, but I think there's a couple of little stray cats in my neighborhood, too. They could help with that sort of rodent control.
That's how big a rat you're talking about?
I, yeah, hopefully, they wouldn't be that big, bigger than a cat, but I definitely understand the concern, and I have, I have a letter of recommendation from a friend in the paperwork I submitted, but I do have several other friends that have hens in the area, so definitely, before I go out and buy everything, I'm going to... area, so definitely, before I go out and buying everything, I'm gonna definitely spend a lot of time with them, learning how to take care of things like that, addressing the salmonella issues, and making sure that I'm doing everything to keep it safe for myself, for my animal, for my, for my dog, for my neighbors.
I guess the other concern I have is simply having what I call farm animals within the town. As I say, when I had chickens, I was out in the middle of nowhere, and it wasn't a big deal.
Yeah, I, well, I recently moved into my home, about eight weeks ago, and I really, I'd never lived in Arandaquay before, and when I moved there, really, I fell in love with the yard and how big it is, and, you know, really how, even though it's in a busy area, how very spacious and private that it feels, and I really bought this home with the intent of definitely coming here to do this, knowing that the Town of Arandaquay does allow this if approved. So that was definitely one of my determinations of, you know, choosing a town to live in as well, would be, you know, a town that accepts it under, you know, appropriate conditions. And, you know, I mean, really, realistically, I know, you know, Arandaquay's not like a country town or anything, but, you know, the feel of the backyard is very nature-like and very private, so I think that, I think it could really work out well in my backyard, and if for some reason it didn't, if neighbors complained, if my, if it, any sort of issues that arose, if it attracted rats, I certainly do not want rats in my neighborhood, and if I had to get rid of them, because it caused this sort of problems, I absolutely would and not hesitate. So, I'm pretty willing to be flexible as far as that goes, and if neighbors did have any concern, I would hope they'd feel comfortable and come talk to me about it, and I would address any issue.
There are two procedural issues that I wanted to bring up. First off, as you can see, there are five members of the board who are present tonight, two are absent, and in order for an application to be approved, it requires an affirmative vote of four members of the board. So, if you wanted to continue tonight and then adjourn till the time when the board, the full board were present, that would be one option, you can let us know. Another question that I have is, in the past, we have, we have approved some applications and we have denied others, and on the ones that we have approved, we have put in, I think we put in a restriction that it was limited to a very relatively small period of time, and then was to be subject to re-review so that we could assess what the actual impact was and that kind of thing. So, I guess my question to you is, would you be amenable to that as a condition of, if we were to look favorably upon your application, would you agree to it being for a very limited time period, say a period of one year, with a review by the town officials that, in three or four months after the summer season is concluded?
Yeah, absolutely, and also, I just wanted to add, I'm not gonna dive right into getting four hens either, I was just gonna get two to start, just to make sure that it worked out.
I guess that was another question I had, is how soon, if we were to receive approval, how soon would the hens be arriving?
Well, I don't have them ordered just yet, I definitely, I need to first, you know, order the coop, get that all set up. I would hope by the end of summer, maybe early fall, just so I can get adjusted before wintertime comes, and then, like I said, I'm just gonna start off with two, just to make sure, you know, even if we had a meeting again in a year from now, I would probably still only have those two, just 'cause I wanna feel the situation out first, and not, you know, bite off more than I can chew, or something like that.
Looking at your survey, your lot is 200, looks like 256, 255 feet deep? And obviously, the coop is gonna be all the way to the back?
Yes.
Border? And I assume that all the neighbors' yards are pretty much the same depth all along that street, backing up to the plaza?
Yeah.
I noticed that the neighbor immediately to your east has some kind of a garage structure located at the rear of the car, and looked like he was working on some cars back in there. And so I know that the depth of the lots provides you, and backing up to plaza provides you with some opportunities that you might not have if the lots were shorter and there were neighbors on the backside.
Absolutely, and that was another factor of me wanting, really loving this house, you know, because of, you know, the privacy and not having real neighbors behind me. And the lot depth is great, I don't, and I know you guys were there, but I actually, I took a couple pictures too, I don't know if you need to see them, but I stood in the spot where the coop is going, where I would like it to be, and then I took pictures of each neighbor's house, and you literally can't even see their houses because of how lush the trees are, and how many trees that there are, so I really, I mean, for my neighbors directly on either side, I mean, it's not even gonna be an eyesore, 'cause they're not even gonna be able to see it. Do you need to see the pictures?
Yeah, pass them around. How much noise do these hens make, do you know?
Well, I don't think they make much, really, I think it's the roosters that make the big old, big old noise, I think two of them just together, I think would be buddies and play a little bit, but I don't think it would be anything that myself or either neighbors could hear.
And if I recall, you have wooden fences on the side of your property, right?
Yeah, yep, I think it's like six-foot privacy most of the way around.
And are there dogs on both sides of your house at all?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so this first one is where I want the coop to be, and then, that's my house from where I want it to be, how far it is, and then, these are both neighbors' houses I took pictures of, and you can really hardly see either neighbor.
Alright. I'll pass them. Any other questions?
So, in the two pictures, where I took the pictures of the neighbors' houses, I mean, there's nothing to even really see, 'cause you can't even see their houses, you just see kind of the lushness of the backyard.
Do you have some experience, according to this letter?
Oh, yeah, well, and my boyfriend too, he grew up in Mendon, and he had lots of friends on farms too, he worked on farms as well, so... I wish, I almost wished he was up here talking, 'cause he has so much more knowledge than even I do.
And these are the people who agreed to it?
Yep, those are, I think there's six neighbors, I got the two on either side of me, and then two directly across, and even since I've submitted that, I've met more neighbors that think it's just a fine idea.
Everybody want their eggs?
I promised them all eggs, they're all excited. So hopefully, I won't be disappointing them.
Privacy works. Alright, just for the record, attached to the submission from the applicant were letters in favor of the application that was signed by, one was received from Nicole Lewis, who doesn't indicate an address, there were letters or indications of support from Brian and Elizabeth Tallinger residing at 66 Russell Avenue, and where's that in relation to your?
If you're facing my house, the one to the right, the man that you saw working in the back.
Okay, and also from Lauren?
Driscoll.
Driscoll?
Uh-huh, so they're the home to the other side of me, yep.
Forty-six, and Alan and Kathleen Fell from 65, which is across the street, right?
Directly across the street, yep.
And Robert Ange from 77, which is also across the street, right? And I've already referenced the email from Ms. Harding. Are there any other questions? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Step right up. I had anticipated that.
My name is Jonathan Youngman, I reside at 54 Russell Avenue. I believe that we're both completely capable of taking care of these animals, they're not just gonna be livestock to us, they are gonna be our pets. I have done a ton of research on, you know, how to take care of them, I grew up on farms, I worked on farms all my life, so I know how to keep them clean, how to keep pests away, I know what to look for when one's diseased, if there's any kind of issues, I'll know it right away. I have complete confidence in being able to take care of these, so, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Step, come up to the podium one at a time, give us your name and your address, please.
Hi, my name's Barbara Klimick, 83 Russell Avenue, which is across the street, three houses down.
Closer to Culver? Or away from Culver?
Away from Culver.
Okay.
My opposition would be livestock, we're in Arandaquay, we're not in the country, there are rats in that plaza, there's no getting around it, you have Papa John's there, where there's food, there are rats, and since I'm on the other side, I haven't seen them very many, I have seen a few. Also, I like chicken, I'll eat chicken, I don't mind. We're not in the country, that's my opposition, salmonella, disease, rats, people walk their dogs, my dog has gotten out, we have an 80-pound dog, and he has gotten out of the house. I would hate to have their coop destroyed, I don't know if he would, but those are my oppositions to it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Alright, give you an opportunity to address the points that were raised.
Well, I was just gonna say, you guys all saw that my yard is fully fenced in, so I don't think a dog, if it got out, could get into my area at all, I think it's pretty secured. And, I mean, you know, three houses down, you know, you're not gonna smell it, you're not gonna see it, my immediate neighbors aren't even gonna see it, I don't think it's gonna be offensive, really, to anyone in the neighborhood if, I mean, if everyone didn't even get the notification, I don't think anyone besides my two immediate neighbors would even know it was there. And as far as these rodents, you know, I have only been there for two months, but I have not witnessed a problem just yet. Like I said, I do have a dog that is, you know, in that kind of business of taking care of rodents, and then there's also the stray cats that I think would help that issue too, so, you know, and then also, you know, yeah, this isn't, this isn't the country, but, you know, this is a lovely county that we live in, it is rather lush, it's, it's a suburb, it's a town, the city of Rochester allows even chickens, and that's, you know, that's a city, and you don't even have to have a permit there, I'm pretty sure. So I think the fact that it's even in the suburbs doesn't even really make a huge difference, you know, whether it be Arandaquay, Mendon, wherever, my backyard's still the size it is, it's still fully fenced, and it's still barely visible from anybody at all, so I think that should cover all those bases of potential issues.
Okay, thank you, and I also wanted, I should've done this before we started this hearing, because most, everything else that we've considered up to this point tonight has been an area variance, and that's the vast majority of the applications that come to us are for area variances. This is an application, and we have another application coming up on our docket later for a special use permit. So, what I was going to do is ask our counsel to, just for the edification of everyone who's here, and to remind us of what the difference is between a special use permit, what it's about, what the criteria are, and differences between the area variance.
Well, when you consider special use permits, that's section 274B of the Town Code, and I think it's important for you to note that it's, it's not a variance, so the distinction between a special use permit and the variance applications is that the special use permit is not subject to the same rigorous standards for consideration as use variances are. So we've spent a lot of time, I think we got a use variance on here as well.
Next item.
Those are, those are always considerations that require, require quite a bit of information and knowledge and particularity, this is less, and what this really, when you do your consideration, and you don't do this on a regular basis, but a special use permit is kinda like a site plan, that's section seven, 274A of the Town Code, and your site plan review is kind of a generic overview of what's there. Obviously, at the planning board level, when someone's asking for a site plan, they get into a lot of specificity, in this instance, again, it does not require that level of level that you have for use, but I'll just read it to you so you can understand, and some, many of these aren't applicable, but that's section 274A, which is sort of the consideration, parking and means of access, and access would be important, screening is important, the landscaping component is something you would consider, the location and the dimension of the buildings, not just the buildings on the site, but the buildings that are contiguous and around the site, adjacent land uses, I think, would be relevant in this particular case, and when I say I think, by the way, remember, I always tell you this, I don't have an opinion on the application, I'm just giving you my, my legal advice as best as I can, but if it sounds like I'm leaning one way or the other, please disregard that, I'm not. You're also, in addition to considering the adjacent land uses, you're considering protection of the adjacent land uses, and that's not just contiguous next door, but that would be the neighborhood. And finally, I think there's, there's just a generic consideration in section 274A, and that's other elements set by any local ordinances, so basically, the health, the safety, and the welfare of the neighborhood is what you're looking into. Boy, you didn't expect that long of a speech, did you?
I figured it wouldn't be much shorter than that.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll, having heard from everyone, we'll close this hearing, and before we get to the next item on our agenda, I'm gonna ask him again, to Mr. Orelli again, to, this is the application for a use variance, so we have done area variances, we have a special use permit, we have another special use permit coming up. If you can clarify for us the difference between area variance and use variance, not only just for us, but also for people who are here, people who are watching, and most importantly, for the applicants.
Okay, when you consider a use variance, you're all set now, thank you very much. When you consider a use variance, now, the area variance is the one that you routinely and regularly consider, with special use permit is even in the hierarchy, probably if there is such a thing, is a less, less requirement. When you go to a use variance, this is something that's probably more demanding with regard to your requirement, and the criteria are the things that your decision is gonna really be largely based upon. Is there an unnecessary hardship, they can't realize a reasonable return in this case, that the alleged hardship relating to the property in question is unique, it doesn't apply to a substantial portion of the neighborhood, that the requested use variance, if granted, won't alter the essential character of the neighborhood, and that it hasn't been self-created. I'm not, I'm not so concerned with the self-creation component, the courts have kind of minimized that. The important consideration is the no reasonable return. Are they asking for this particular use variance because that there is just no other reasonable return, and you've had some considerations recently, I know, I know the board understands it, but it's important for the applicant to understand it, it's kinda, it's kinda like, like looking, looking at a financial statement and showing that no matter how hard you try, you're upside down in that financial statement, and I think this board has done a fine job in assessing that, and you can do that, your unique circumstances, that is what it says. Let's look, let's look at the application and see how, if it can and possibly be differentiated, likewise, the essential character of the neighborhood. And, boy, we know about that in the Town of Arandaquay, and I don't mean, I don't mean to make light of that, neighborhoods in the Town of Arandaquay, and again, this is not my position on whether this application should be granted or shouldn't be granted, but I've lived, I've lived here for 30 years, and I think, the last applicant said two months, and both of us have reached the same conclusion, that's why the essential character of the neighborhood is such an important consideration. I'm not suggesting other towns don't treat that importantly, but in Arandaquay, neighborhood life is very important, so I would advise the board to look very closely at that. Self-created hardship, lastly, again, I'm not so sure that that's something that you have to consider rigorously.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1307-6. Upon the matter of request by Trinity Community Church for a use variance to lease a portion of the building to operate a daycare facility on premises 759 Winona Boulevard in an R1 residential district.
Good evening, I'm Scott Schwab, I'm the volunteer treasurer of Trinity Communion Church.
Mr. Schwab, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And this is an application for a use variance to lease a portion of your property to a commercial daycare provider?
Correct.
And, just before we get going, can someone, either Michelle or Mr. Orelli, refresh my recollection as to what the permitted uses are in an R1 residential district? I know it's housing, and I know it's churches, and I know it's schools, but I'm not sure what else comes under that.
Farm, farmland, single-family dwellings.
Family.
Um, accredited schools by New York, New York State Accredited Schools.
Part of Regions.
I don't think there's anything else. So, I take it that the reason that this would require a variance is because it's a commercial daycare provider?
Correct. Yes. And we have considered actually using a nonprofit, um, provider, uh, which I think, um, if my, uh, data is correct, we would not, um, need a use variance if, in fact, we were gonna use a, a nonprofit, uh, daycare provider. Um, we have, um, uh, been introduced to two providers. Um, and, uh, the one that we have, uh, asked to go forward with is a, a for-profit entity. We've not confronted that, uh, family with the prospect of being a nonprofit agency. Um, we recognize that there's more work on their part, uh, in order to qualify for that status and to maintain that status. Um, and up to that point, uh, up to this point, we haven't, uh, we haven't gone that, uh, direction with them.
Along with your application, you submitted, um, financial data for the operating margin for 2009, 2010, 2011, and 2012.
Correct.
And I have to say, these are mu- much healthier than some of the statements that I look at in our annual meetings at my church.
Mine closed.
Yes. So, um, the only year in which you suffered a loss was in 2012, and that loss was a hundred and forty-seven dollars if I'm reading this correctly.
Correct.
Versus the preceding three years in which you realized roughly a twenty-nine-thousand-dollar gain.
Correct.
So, I'm a little hard-pressed to understand how, uh, in one year, a hundred and forty-seven-dollar loss against a twenty-nine-thousand-dollar gain over the previous three translates into, um, unable to realize a reasonable return. And I also don't, am having trouble with relating the, uh, information that's on that sheet to the return on the use of the property. I understand that the, the church may have had, in terms of donations, in 2012, a year that isn't what you'd hoped for, but I'm not sure how that relates to the use of the property.
Yeah. Well, um, the, the property is, um, the single largest expense that we have beyond payroll. Um, and what these financials do not reflect is a depreciation expense, which would enable us to fund the improvements that a building that age requires. Um, we right now are, uh, conducting a capital campaign, for example, to, um, provide a greater support to our heating and cooling, um, which we have not been able to afford. Um, and the, uh, you know, we need roof repairs, um, in the future. Um, we, uh, have a number of other things that, um, require replacement. The windows in the building, um, are all in excess of, uh, twenty years old, um, and need to be replaced. Um, so the capital demands of the building are extensive. And for us to, um, have a return, we need to, you know, generate at a minimum, uh, a profit to just keep the, the operation going. And you'll recognize in those financials that we've done a lot to curb our expenses, um, and have had, um, reductions in the salary of our, um, uh, pastor and the, uh, the other folks that support the church. Um, and that can only happen so many years before we no longer have anybody interested in, you know, providing the services to the church. Um, this year, we will sustain about a twelve thou- twenty-seven-thousand-dollar reduction in our charitable giving. Uh, we don't expect that to rebound, uh, very quickly, um, as a result of the nature of our congregation. It's a small congregation. Um, the size of the building, um, doesn't permit for there to be much larger, um, congregations that could support a building that has the demands that it does have. Um, as I mentioned earlier, there's a number of capital projects that we need to move forward with. Um, we're only gonna be able to do that if our charitable contributions exceed the operating expenses of the, of the, um, of the church, and operating of the church. There's a number of things that we do as a church that we'd like to fund that we've been unable to fund. We, right now presently do not fund, um, very much mission work, um, outside of our community. Um, that's a disappointment to members of our congregation. We wanna be able to do those kinds of things. Um, and we need to be able to, you know, raise money in addition, or in excess of our expenses in order to do, you know, the full content of what we believe the mission of our church is. Um, you know, I think that, uh, what we recognized is that this, um, use of the building does not, uh, change the character of the building. We operate a nursery in the, in the church on Sundays, um, presently. Um, we have the facilities to deal with young children. Um, we have the bathroom facilities, the food service facilities, the kitchen, the, um, the large rooms for crafts and so forth. So, this is the nature of what the, the church structure is. Um, we recognize that we're the only church in the neighborhood. Um, so, in an R1 district, I mean, we are a unique, um, building and facility and a unique use as it is. Um, and so, we depend very heavily on our ability to use the building productively and, uh, for the charitable contributions, uh, to come in. And, uh, to the extent that they have softened, um, and they have softened, um, even over that time period, we've recognized that they've, um, softened. In some of the prior years, the building fund has been the, the spot where we've had the greatest amount of growth. And that has been for very specific targeted projects and from very specific and targeted donations.
I noticed, uh, excuse me, uh, the revenues. Is any of that, uh, revenue, any collections as far as the, you know, what you collect when the actual people come into church?
Those are all collections.
Which, which one, which one?
Ties and offerings are collections from the church, as is building fund and the missions fund.
Okay. And when I did visit the premises, the whole basement really is a daycare.
Right. All right. The, um, the building that was constructed in the nineteen-sixties, um, is an education wing, you know, on the, on the original sanctuary that was built in nineteen-twenty.
How many, uh, classrooms does it have?
It actually has six classrooms. We intend for the, um, it to only operate out of two classrooms. Um, the nursery and an adjacent, immediately adjacent classroom. We expect one other, um, classroom to be used as an office, um, for the daycare, and for them to be able to store, um, their, um, instructional materials that they, um, will use on the weekdays that the church will not use on Saturdays and Sundays.
How many, uh, children would you anticipate?
Fourteen on, uh, um, at one time. There'd be, the maximum class size would be fourteen.
And it's, um, an eight-hour type of operation?
No, it's, um, actually, it's, uh, to serve, um, to care for the half-day kindergarten class. Um, so what we would expect is, um, a half, a morning class and an afternoon class. And then the opportunity for siblings of those children to be there prior to the bus picking them up. And then, uh, for those children, or brothers and sisters of children to come after school waiting for their parents to pick them up at six.
On the, uh, financial statement that you submitted, it has a note, and you mentioned this during your presentation, that the expenses do not include depreciation.
Correct.
Can you give me an estimate as to how much of a depreciation expense there is in every year?
About twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
All right. So, that pretty much wipes out all the gains that I'd noted earlier.
Indeed.
And the, uh, projected income that you would anticipate receiving from the daycare, if this were to be approved, would be approximately what?
Fifteen thousand?
Fifteen thousand?
Right.
All right. And you also have rental income of various amounts listed up under revenues. What's that source of the rental income?
We, um, have a, um, ministry, Bridges of New York, um, that we house their bookkeeper. Um, it's a nonprofit ministry, um, that serves, um, men and women who are coming out of incarceration that need to get, um, back into society. And we operate, we, uh, rent out for five-hundred dollars a month, uh, to this nonprofit, um, a, um, office for their administrator.
I think we're familiar with that.
We've heard about that before, yes.
Yeah.
Uh, and it doesn't have anything to do, though, with, uh, having anybody housed there or services being provided to people who come there?
No services are provided. It's just an administrative office.
All right. Any other questions?
Have you talked to any of the neighbors or neighborhood about the, uh, concerns that they might have?
We have. We have. Um, and we have gotten general support, um, from the folks that we've talked to, um, specifically over the past couple of weekends. Um, our rector, who's not able to be here this evening, um, did go door-to-door and, and did talk to the neighbors closest to the house and found no, you know, uh, reservation.
Just curious, anticipation of school buses dropping off and picking up children?
No greater degree than school buses already visit the neighborhood.
Um, a place for them to pull in and turn around, or are they gonna be dropping off at the street?
They actually have, if you're familiar with the property, it has, um, a parking lot immediately in front of the, of the facility, and then it has a large parking lot in the back of the facility. Um, more than ample space for, you know, buses to drop off young ones without, you know, interfering with the, uh, traffic. Likewise, the parking would be there for parents to the extent that they're either dropping off their children or picking up their children.
No concern, no neighbors show any concern about it?
No.
Okay.
Are the, is the present use, even though, when I was there, I noticed all the smaller chairs and toys and stuff?
Correct.
Is it presently being used, uh, as a daycare?
As a nursery. Not as a daycare, but as a nursery for Sundays.
Okay.
So.
All right. Any other questions? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? If you could form a line or come up orderly and one at a time and, um, just, uh, give us your name and address, and then, uh, none of you need to be sworn, so just give us your name and address and, uh, and tell us what your, uh, concerns or questions are.
Uh, I'm Brian German. I'm at 207 Chestnut Hill Drive. Uh, first of all, I've talked to a number of my neighbors, um, and many did not receive any notice of this meeting, number one. Two, I came a few days ago and got a copy of the official, uh, appeal application. And I talked to the office today, and they indicated that this, as does, uh, the hearing date on this application, is July third, which deprives, uh, many of my neighbors, uh, who were unable to be here tonight, and this, and I actually found out about this accidentally, uh, from being able to present their concerns. So, um, I would, from a procedural perspective, uh, request that this be tabled, and that, uh, whatever the timeframe is that you normally designate from, uh, appeal time, application time to the hearing, I would request that an additional period of time equal to that be given to the community to be able to respond to this, because I think this is, uh, inconsistent with, uh, what everybody's expectations are.
Just addressing that issue, if it were to be tabled, it'd be tabled to our meetings. Our meetings are always the first Monday of the month, with the exception of September, uh, in which case we meet on the second Monday of the month. Uh, so the, whatever the first day is, uh, in first Monday in August is the day on which it would be tabled too, so that that's not an issue. Thursday?
It's a Thursday.
No, the first Monday.
Monday.
Which will never fall on a Thursday. I don't know what day it is, but it's not the first. It would be the first Monday in August. So, it'd be somewhere between the first and the seventh.
The fifth.
Fifth of August.
Well, I, I guess my point is, um, I don't have any fundamental objection to that timeline. Um, my objection is that, um, you see a number of people here standing behind me, and there are-
I've heard from all of them.
There are a considerable number more, uh, that have expressed interest in this that are, have mentally materially deprived of the opportunity to do so as a result of this, whatever the snafu is. Um, so, absent that, uh, I would move, I don't know if that's my place, uh-
It's not.
Okay. Um, so then I would like to continue, uh, with my remarks and my-
Go ahead.
So, um, uh, in the, uh, the church's communication here with respect to the alleged hardships, um, there's one paragraph and in that it cites, you know, as a member of the neighborhood and, uh, the fact that it, uh, it faces unique challenges. Um, the challenges here are the cost of doing business. And sometimes the cost of doing business is going out of business. And, you know, these are all facts. All the issues, all the depreciation, all the property use issues, these are issues that were present the day that they made the offer, and that offer was accepted to purchase this property. Um, as well, I, I don't see that, um, you know, I find it a little dubious that the numbers have swayed dramatically, and I don't understand not only how we go from twenty-nine thousand or twenty-seven thousand to, uh, essentially a hundred-dollar loss. Um, that doesn't make sense to me, one. Uh, I have not seen any diminished attendance at the church over the last several years. Um, I'm not keeping track, granted. Um, but also, if we're talking about now a forecasted twenty-seven-thousand-dollar, uh, shortfall in terms of tithing gifts, whatever, um, I fail to see, one, how that has been forecasted, where they come up with those numbers. Um, and two, to me, that renders this, um, you know, somewhat of a moot point. I, I think this is a waste of time, uh, if, if we're at, being asked to accept those numbers. Um, got a couple other points, and then I'll wrap it up. Um, the contractor, whoever this is going to be, uh, to provide these services, we don't know what the socioeconomic background of these kids are. We don't know where they're coming from. We don't know what the background of the organization is that's taking care of these kids. Uh, we don't know anything about how, um, they are going to feed, whatever additional issues. Um, I mean, they've gotta go outside and they've gotta play. So, are we looking at then a variance for a six-foot fence to protect these kids from predators and others, and vehicles on the street? And then are we talking about new playground equipment? Uh, there's a parking lot in the back that is not suitable for any of those needs, which means all of a sudden the front lawn of the church becomes the only choice. I don't want an attractive nuisance in my neighborhood. I paid a premium to live in this neighborhood, and I'm not interested in sharing it with people who do not share necessarily my values or my economic interests. So, I think, um, also, we don't know what the age of these kids are. I mean, I don't know whether we're talking about, uh, elementary school-age kids, or whether we're talking about after-school, high-school students. So, I didn't, uh, find that clear. Um, and I think that's, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next.
My name's Dave Simon. I live at 220 Chestnut Hill Drive. This is my wife.
And Simon.
And we oppose it simply for the fact that it's gonna compromise the safety, welfare, and characteristic of the neighborhood. We moved in fifteen years ago knowing there was a church right across the street from our house. We're on the corner of Chestnut Hill Drive and Winona, Winona Boulevard, and their property's right across the street. And we knew they were gonna be there when we purchased the house, but we just expected traffic or to be busy Sunday mornings, possibly a Saturday evening, maybe once during the week. evening, maybe once during the week for a youth group. We didn't expect that there'd be traffic from 6:00 in the morning to 7:00 at night. So with that being said, that's why we are in opposition of a daycare being moved into our neighborhood.
Because of traffic, and also because our house is on that corner right across the street from the church where the one grassy area would be, so we'd be concerned that, I would assume a commercial daycare may require outdoor, an outdoor area for the children to play in. That, I think, would be the only spot available, would be right across the street. And again, I'd be concerned that they'd be putting up a fence in that area, and that's where the kids would be expected to play, and that they'd be putting outdoor toys and that sort of stuff there for us to look at, and lots of kids out there making noise.
And I want to add, they've been great neighbors for the last 15 years. We haven't had an issue. They've done a wonderful job with their landscaping over the course of the last few years since the new group has moved in, and it looks aesthetically pleasing. And, you know, we are concerned with what she had just said.
All right, just one of the things that I would point out that did come up during the hearing, and that is that, is that if it wasn't commercial, that they might not need to be here at all, that it, because it would be part of what is normally encompassed within the not-for-profit uses in an R1 neighborhood, so.
And that's something we weren't aware of. So they could get a nonprofit group to come in and lease that space for as many kids as they choose and do what they want?
That's what the applicant indicated, and I don't believe that that's inaccurate. I believe that's correct. It's similar to the, to a lot of other things, that things are permitted in the town, but in certain instances and under certain circumstances, they require some kind of application or permit. And in this case, the fact that it's commercial is what alters the use.
And don't, don't lose sight of, I think, the question the chairman asked even before the applicant made a presentation. An allowed use in an R1 area is educational. This is outside that definition because of the unique character of the use that they're going to employ. But a school in that location is not automatically, in fact, is automatically permitted, subject to circumstances. So it's just important to know.
And a school, a daycare would be considered a school? Is that what you're saying, or would?
Not necessarily. And after, and again, I'm not, I don't have an opinion, but I'm, you know, advising the board again, that what could be, or what might have been, aren't considerations, obviously, when someone makes an application. It's just the application that's before the board and the unique facts, in fact, the second criteria is unique circumstances before the board. So I don't think you really need to consider what could be, but what they're applying for and what the facts are that apply to this neighborhood. Bear in mind that an R1 does not mean solely single-family houses lined up next to each other. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Alvy Casada, and I reside at 233 Chestnut Hill Drive. Some of my concerns were on the same basis as the first neighbor of mine that spoke. I also received a copy from a kind neighbor of the application, which had June 3rd as the date. I, fortunately, because of the weather tonight, was able to attend. I was planning on being here on the 3rd, not this evening. I don't believe that the residents were properly notified. I did not receive one of the yellow postcards. I was notified, like I said, as through casual conversation with one of my neighbors. In here, it talks about increased traffic, that it's not going to be increased traffic. I can't see how that can possibly be so. I live probably approximately 500 feet from the church, and that's a direct route. Our street, they're going to be driving up and down our street, past my house on a daily basis. Increased traffic from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM at night. I do have two children, and one of them is outside almost every day, all day when we are home. I'm very uncomfortable with the fact that we don't know who is going to be attending this daycare, and the safety of my children is first and foremost. I don't want strangers in my neighborhood. We have lived on this street for approximately five years. Since we've been there, I'm very comfortable with my neighbors. We are a very close-knit group, as you can see through word of mouth, many of them are here tonight. Sorry, I lost my train of thought. I, you know, very, very much opposed. I can't see how increased traffic is not going to be an issue. Also, busing, I know there was just a conversation about, you know, is it going to be, I'm confused, I guess, is it going to be kindergarten? Is this going to be some kind of approved school or a daycare? Because I don't get a bus after a third grade. I have to drive my kids every day to school, and these people are going to be able to get busing, which is kind of a sore topic for me, because I do pay taxes, you know, we've been here, and I cannot get a bus. I have called the school, I have talked to the superintendent, and I pretty much was just swept under the carpet. So that, that's a sore spot for me as well. And when it comes to the income, I'm not really sure that necessarily the
That's wrong.
this daycare is going to make up for the fact. What if the daycare doesn't work out? So where do we go from there? Back to square one? And my other question is, is this going to be, now become a commercial if it's not a nonprofit daycare? Will it be then zoned as a commercial building? And then, once it becomes commercial, that it's always going to be commercial, so anything can go in there if the church doesn't make it? So those are also my concerns. Are we, I mean, once commercial, I'm sure it's going to be very difficult to revert back to, you know, residential zoning. So I do have a lot of questions and concerns. And like I said, I think that a lot more, many more of our neighbors would be here tonight if they were, received proper notification of the issue.
Let me ask you about that. Was the sign displayed in front of the church? I know when I was there on Sunday, it was.
I do not know, to be honest. I don't go, I do not attend that church. I have no reason to go down that street. Most of my neighbors are right across, or I haven't seen myself the notification.
Because
I do not know if it's posted.
Right, there's a limited number of people, it's within a certain geographical distance of the, of the property that
I did try to research that online. Do you know? Because I did try to look up the code quickly before I came here.
I can answer that for you.
I didn't know what the specification was.
We send, we send an individual notification, not required, but as an additional courtesy to the people who would theoretically be most impacted by any kind of a change, and we send it to within 200 feet
200 feet.
of the area. So I'm going to read it so that you all understand. 32 Chapel Hill, 37, 790 Winona, 778 Winona, 240 Chestnut Hill, 160 Chestnut Hill, 174 Chestnut Hill, 194 Chestnut Hill, 799 Winona, 781 Winona, 759 Winona, 772 Winona, 760, 230 Chestnut Hill, 182, 202 Chestnut Hill, 14 Chapel Hill, 23 Chapel Hill, 17 Winchester, 768 Winona, 220 Chestnut Hill, 164 Chestnut Hill, and 188 Chestnut Hill. So those were the areas that were deemed to be in the impact within 200 feet. Then it is supplemented by the sign, which is required within a certain number of days prior to the hearing, to be prominently displayed, and the board's been very conscientious, I think, about making sure that happens, and it's a legitimate question to ask. And there is an error in the worksheet that came into the town. It does say July 3rd. However, the legal notice that was published in the publication deemed to be the legal publication for the town that would be the press, does designate Monday, July 1st, 2013. And that's really the document that has to be gone by. So there's multiple methods of notification, and I'm not going to take an opinion on whether they worked or not, but they were, they were complied with other than one clerical error on a document which wasn't published.
Okay, I just, I just find it was kind of ironic, too, that the treasurer stated that, you know, they walked through the neighborhood, and several of us did not talk face-to-face with the pastor, whoever did go around and discuss it. And I, as far as I know, if I correctly find wrong, my neighbors right across from the church did not speak to anybody as well. So, I mean, they're literally, I feel for them. They look out their windows, right across the street is the church. And like they said, my concern also would be, you know, big playground equipment displayed right in the front yard, and if they're going to be putting up a sign, I don't feel that there's appropriate space for a bus to come in and turn around or drop off. There's maybe 15, if 15 to 20 spaces in front of the church, and then you would have to go down, I believe, Chapel. Their parking lot is a disaster, it's full of potholes. I don't understand how the buses are going to go in there and make a U-turn and come back out. So there are several concerns, and I just thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Next.
The sign was there on Wednesday when I went.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Marie Puckett.
And I'm Mike Puckett.
We live at 202 Chestnut Hill Drive, and we have concerns. Our, our lot line is backed up right to their property, and there is no fence between their, their property and our property. And I work from home, and I will be during the day, it's nice and quiet, I don't have to worry about kids, I don't have to worry about noise. This will really impact my day. My dog goes nuts every Sunday morning when church is going on. And I, I do like the church there, I like the music. I, you know, I stand in my yard, and I love it. It's not a problem. But my dog goes nuts, and when my dog's going crazy, I can't work. So it really is going to impact me personally. I do have some other concerns about, there's no fence in the yard, there's a big hill. We have pictures of our backyard and the line that it drops off. The kids come from all over the neighborhood, and they come and they sled all winter long. So there's a big hill right there. If you don't fence that, there's a problem. There's also a dead tree in that property that probably would have to come down. So it's not going to be cheap for them to establish this business in itself. And again, my main concern is, once it becomes commercial, and can it expand after that? So whether the daycare makes it or they don't make it, now it's a business, so now can something else come in there? And how do you control it? And how do they, right now, it's said in the paperwork that it would be during school, school timeframes, you know, during the school season? Well, who's going to stop it for it to expand during the summertime as well? So that's basically what I want to share.
Here's a picture to pass it around. This is the lower level of the church. It's all paved. This is the upper level of the church. It's where the grassy area would be. That grassy area directly goes to our rear yard. So what my wife is saying is that, yeah, we know there's a church there. We, you know, moved to the home, we knew the church was there. We expected maybe one night a week, maybe an occasional Saturday, and I'll cook out, and of course, Sunday services. You're talking now possibly 28 kids, maybe more if they decide to expand other rooms there. What are they going to do at 3:00, 4:00 on a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday afternoon? They're going to be up here playing. And our dog's going to be going crazy, she's going to have a hard time working from home. Plus, I would think, even as a nonprofit, and you should look into this, because that might be their loophole, wouldn't they have to change the character of this yard? Wouldn't they have to fence it in? And then doesn't that affect residential property and the value of the property in the neighborhood? So that's something to be thought about. Another thing to be thought about would be the notice. We've talked about that a couple of times. The property that the church has has substantial frontage along both Chapel Hill and Winona Boulevard. On Chapel Hill, there was no sign posted whatsoever. Here's the sign that's posted on Winona. It's leaning down, and it's behind a parking sign which says visitor parking only. Not very visible. I don't think that's a very good notice for the neighborhood as far as that there is going to be something tonight.
Sorry.
And then finally, for lack of a better way to put it, the treasurer who was just here earlier, he lied to you. You asked him straight out in the record, we'll show, if he talked to any of the neighbors. And he said, oh, yeah, we talked to lots of neighbors, and we have no opposition. Well, obviously, there's a line here behind me tonight, there is some opposition. Our property backs right up to the church. We were home all day Sunday. We were home most of the day Saturday. Nobody dropped over. Nobody knocked on my door and said, hey, Mr. and Mrs. Puckett, here's what we're planning on doing. So if you look at the record, what the treasurer said to you, and he said there's no opposition and he talked to people, there was no attempt made. We were home. He lied to you. There's no other way to put it. And that's
And I want to just say that we talked to our neighbors that are next to us on Chestnut Hill, and they didn't get a yellow card. They didn't know about it either. And they're not in favor of this either, because they have two small children, and they're not interested in this. So, thank you.
We thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gene Young. I live adjacent to the parking lot of the church. Right, we share, we share a property line, and I'm totally, I'm object, object
You're opposed.
I'm getting too old, that's what the problem is.
I take it you're opposed.
I am vehemently opposed, okay? It will do, to me, in my mind, reduce the property value. I've been there 20 years now. It's increased traffic, which has already been addressed. And this is an R1 residential neighborhood. It's a beautiful neighborhood, and I don't want to see commercial enterprises get into the picture, because as the previous people said, anything can happen beyond that, okay? So let it be said that I object to it totally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Could you give me, what is your address?
23, I live right next to the parking lot.
23 Winona?
Chapel Hill.
Chapel Hill. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jeff Drew. This is my wife, Kim. We live at 227 Chestnut Hill, which is almost directly across the street and maybe two houses down to the
South.
Yes. So I think everything's been addressed so far. We have concerns with the traffic, we have concerns with commercial variance being brought into the neighborhood. You had concerns?
Well, I don't understand how this would not affect our property value. I personally would not move into a neighborhood knowing that there was a commercial property there. The traffic issue, we have kids that are the age now that they don't get a bus, so my kids walk, so the extra traffic and bringing more strangers into the neighborhood is a huge concern for us. Honestly, my biggest concern now is hearing what they're raising the money for the mission. That raises more red flags to me than anything else, to have an office in their church to bring in people who have just gotten out of being incarcerated.
Well, what we were told is that they're not, that it's only for an administrator who uses it as an office, so
Wouldn't those people be coming into that office, using that office?
Well, that's what we asked, and you were told no, that nobody comes into the office.
Okay, so then my other concern is they
We know where they used to go.
Where?
They used to go on Wynton
Wynton Road.
Wynton Road.
I don't live by Wynton Road.
We denied that. We didn't, that was denied by us as well.
So, yeah, most of our concerns have been addressed by everybody. A lot of our neighbors did not know, we also didn't know, but I guess in our town, we, it's not a
Did you see the sign?
No.
I was over there playing with the kids just yesterday, right in that front parking lot, and I didn't even notice it. Didn't even notice it. And we had heard about it secondhandly, because we weren't notified with the card. And so many of our neighbors that were ingredients with us just could not come tonight. I thought it was on the 3rd. My biggest concern is, I hate to say it, but that will most likely inevitably fail anyway, even if it is approved. What happens next? Is it still going to be zoned commercially for that variance?
Or are they going to grow it larger? Are they going to put playground equipment in that front there? So, yeah. Thank you for your time.
Those are our concerns.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Mark Thurston. This is my wife, Janet. We reside at 51 Chapel Hill Drive. We're three houses down from the church. It was just last week when we were out for a walk is when we happened to notice the sign in the front. And, you know, they said there was going, they were asking for a variance, and we both kind of looked at each other and said, gee, I wonder what that's for. One of the things is, he's talking about that he wants to do this to raise money for the church, but then again, you say he could go and do a nonprofit. Well, that kind of defeats the whole purpose of what he wants it for. So if he went nonprofit, they would kind of like be snubbing the neighbors as it is, because you want to raise money for your church, but yet now you're doing something that you're not making any money. So that's really kind of, you know, a threat, you know, a slight threat that really doesn't have any weight for what you're asking for, because you want to raise money for your church.
Nonprofit, let me just clarify one thing. Nonprofit doesn't mean that you don't make any money.
Okay. All right. But obviously, you wouldn't be making the money that you want to if But, uh, obviously you wouldn't be making the money that you want to if you want to have a commercial, you want to make a commercial. Um, yes, we worry about our property values. We worry about the traffic with our kids that are on the street. On Chapel Hill, we have kids from all over. They come from all over Arondiquay to go down that hill. They ride their bikes down. They got their skateboards down. Um, it's just a matter of time you're asking, you know, you're asking for some accidents. We have accidents as it is that they, you know, get out, they lose control and, you know, they scrape some knees and some elbows. Now, for the back parking lot, yes, they have a back parking lot, but I guess one of the things that hasn't been said is there's a drain on that back parking lot that's really dangerous. Driving over, walking over, I mean, it sits way down, you know? So they kind of, you know, you, you talk about the hill on the side where they'd have to fence it in and, you know, if they're going to do things up there. Well, even in the back parking lot, they're going to have to stay away from that. It's right in the middle of the parking lot in the back. You know, you, you could really seriously get hurt back there. I'm sure that people in our neighborhood have been back there, have seen it. I've seen it. Um, I just, he, you know, I go back to, they said that they walked the neighborhood and they talked to people in the neighborhood. Well, I'm three houses away and he didn't talk to me. Okay? And, you know, the gentleman that's, uh, right, his house is adjacent to the parking lot, they didn't even get to him. All those people that, that have been up here speaking, I know where they live and how close they are in proximity. I may be a little bit away from them being three houses away, but they seem to be able to make a trek down, you know, which is great when they're doing fundraiser, you know, like food drives and things, it's fine. You know, I mean, I, I enjoy the church there. I'm not against the church. I'm not opposed to the church. I'm opposed to the daycare because of the potential of what it could become. It could be, it could blow up and if it, if it could get into something different, it could grow bigger. He said he had six rooms. Now, you get two this year, come back next year, well, we want to add two more. Now we want to add two more. Now the increased traffic and everything, the values, the homes, you know, the properties, the possible, you know, a lot of times it's not people that are using, uh, something, but maybe somebody that comes with them and they see things and then say, wow, you know? You know, I'm not, I'm not accusing anybody of, of doing anything illegal, but they come down into the neighborhood and they start seeing things and then they want to come and visit it maybe when it's in, when it's nighttime out, okay? So it's a lot of less, a lot more traffic that we don't really need. And, uh, you know, I have depreciation on my house, so, you know, everybody's, when you buy something, it depreciates in value. But, you know, my, my whole point is with the neighborhood itself and it's going to be, you know, it's just going to do, it's a lot of drawbacks to the people that live there already. And we embrace your church and everything's fine with the church, but now don't try to force something on us that you want. We were there and you came into our neighborhood. So, you know, embrace us and, you know, try to, try to help the neighborhood out a little bit with it. Thank you.
I, I just, I would like to say one thing, that, um, the good thing about our neighborhood is that it's constantly turning over and now there has to be about six or seven new families that just moved in with young kids and, um, you know, whether or not the elderly person went to the friendly home or is deceased, but the neighborhood is turning over. And I'm sure that the people that have moved in recently with these young children did not move in thinking that a church was going to turn into a daycare center with a bus coming down a hill, with a beautiful front yard turning into now a fence, now a fence that you can't see the grass, you can't see the sign where they say, you know, God, they always have a sign on their board. You embrace it. At Christmas, it's beautiful. I, I mean, I, I want to tell them, try to make your congregation bigger and maybe you'll have more money coming in. I mean, I just don't understand why they would think the neighborhood would want to look at a daycare. I'll go, go to Jack and Jill. Is that what we're going to look? We're going to come down our hill and have a Jack and Jill there? I, I just, you know, we, I, I just don't know how I'm going to deal with this. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ed McLennan, 80 Chapel Hill Drive. In the interest of full disclosure, I am running for office, but that is not the reason I have my shirt on today. It is petition time and I was out, uh, passing petitions earlier and I got some frantic calls from my neighbors, so here I am.
We'll adjust the set on the, uh, lens to focus in a little and...
Thank you very much. That's the 17th legislative district?
There you go. All right.
This is a strange, um, collision of a few former jobs that I've had. I used to run daycares and I used to do land use law. I'm a practicing attorney in, in town. Um, I do largely family law now, but, um, before I went to law school, I ran daycares, both in the for-profit sector and in the nonprofit sector. I'm going to revisit that in a second. Um, I also did land use law. There was a very good explanation from the town attorney, um, on the difference between special use permit and area variance and use variance. There's one sort of key element that I think we need to address. With special use permits and area variances, there has been a legislative determination by the, the board of, of the jurisdiction, in this case, the town, that those uses are approved and accepted for that zone. When you're talking about special uses, it's an approved use, it just has to meet certain criteria. When you're talking about area variances, that's an approved use, you're just talking about distance, uh, changes from the code. When you're talking about a use variance, it is a whole different ballgame. It is, when you have to apply for a use variance, you're applying for something that is in derogation to the code. There has been a legislative determination by the governing board that this is not an accepted use in this district. So the standard is much, much higher. We touched on the four main criteria for a use variance approval. And in large part, they focus on hardship and, and reasonable return on investment. We've heard a lot about, um, the operating budget of the church right now. Whether the operating budget is showing a profit or loss is not dispositive of whether that is a reasonable return on their investment. Another way of calculating reasonable return could simply be to sell the property. And can you get a reasonable return toward simply selling a property for one of the accepted uses in, 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 in that district? I don't know that, I have not seen the application, so I don't know if there have been any comparative, um, market analyses that would determine, uh, what the value of that property is and if therefore they could get a reasonable return on that. I don't know that information. The second main criteria is that it is not unique to the area, that, that the hardship is unique to the area and not generalized to the area. Well, this is a generalized, um, hardship because nobody on, in this zone can put a daycare in. It's, it would require use variance for all of us. So it's not unique to the church. It's, it is a generalized, uh, rule that is going to apply to every house in the R1 district, every church in the R1 district. Third main criteria, will not alter the, the central character of the neighborhood. This is important because we heard earlier that it's not going to change the character of the church, but that's not the law. Law has changed the character of the neighborhood. And if you go on, change the character of the church, every church in town would then automatically get a use variance because generally speaking, there's one church and then a whole bunch of houses. So this will change the character of the neighborhood because right now it is a church and single-family houses with kids, retirees. There's no businesses there. I mean, there may be some people that have home offices, but it is not a, uh, a commercial neighborhood. The fourth criteria, not self-created. I don't disagree with the analysis that this has been given less and less weight, but it still is afforded some weight in the analysis. And I don't know the history of the church, but what has caused their enrollment to drop? Were they prosperous and had a robust, um, membership at one time? It has that changed over the last five to 10 years. If there, if that has changed, what caused that? And was that self-created? That is an appropriate analysis to look at for the fourth point. This is dry, boring stuff. I only bring it up to point out that we're talking about a use that has been determined to not be appropriate for the neighborhood, that the standard is very, very high to reach. And this is not, we're not talking about a six-foot fence or a seven-foot fence. We're not talking about, uh, special use permit for a shed in your backyard. This is a fundamental change in the neighborhood that I cannot support. And I don't think that they have met the legal burden that's going to be required of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a question of the, uh, town attorney for point of clarification? This building could house a school under the code. Is that correct?
Yes.
For instance, a charter school or a school that sanctioned by the, uh, state board of regents, a school could move into that property?
An educational institution is a permitted use in an R1 district.
Thank you.
I think a firehouse is too.
Firehouse, yeah.
Firehouses. Mm-hmm. And the church could operate a not-for-profit daycare, as I understand it, from the same premises, so, without a use variance, I believe. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none, I'll ask the applicant if you wish to return.
I do. Um, and, you know, I'm disappointed that, uh, there is as much opposition. I did learn from our priest that he did walk the neighborhood and he did talk to, to residents. Um, I'll talk to him shortly after this meeting about, you know, who exactly that was. What we, um, we do want folks to recognize is that, um, we don't think our circumstance is unique. That a church that, um, needs to be in that facility will be limited by its, uh, membership and, um, inherently will be limited by the number of charitable contributions it can receive. And we did, in all sincerity, think that, um, what we had found was a use that was consistent with a, uh, neighborhood-friendly purpose. That some of the small children that you talk about, um, that live in the neighborhood, we hoped would actually take advantage of the facility. That the, um, the provider that we've talked to is targeting the Arondiquay Half Day Kindergarten as the source of the children that would come to the, to the, uh, church, which we expected were the residents of the surrounding area that we live in, um, as a neighbor. Um, the, the prospect of going out of business, um, we don't think is in anybody's best interest. The sale of that property for any other use would be incredibly difficult. We purchased it as a church. We were three years old, uh, as a church when we purchased it. We've now, um, been there for six years. Actually, our sixth anniversary was June 29th. And we think that we've been a good neighbor, actually. We think that we've actually improved the condition of the building. We think that we've done our very best to maintain, you know, the building and the property. We have removed dead trees. We do make sure that the lawn is consistently mowed. We do think, um, that we have, um, appropriately, um, landscaped the building. In truth, to replace the back parking lot costs us $10,000, $10,000 which we do not have. Um, and that we will, um, need to raise in, in excess of our operating expenses in order to fund that kind of an improvement. We will need a new roof. There are shingles that are off the roof right now and we need to figure out a way to have that kind of development all the while, um, maintaining the operation of the, of the facility. So, you know, I, um, we have had a diminished attendance. Um, you know, our attendance has changed from, from an average, um, of, uh, attendance of 95 to right now about an average of 75. We expect that that'll wax and wane. As someone mentioned, the, the, um, turnover in the neighborhood. It's our hope that, um, some new residents that come into the, to the neighborhood that we all live in, um, will want to come to a church on Sundays. And we want to be there for those folks and, uh, give them an opportunity to worship. So do we expect this, um, uh, you know, to be an eyesore, to attract a, um, uh, a community of folks that aren't otherwise, um, already in the neighborhood? That wasn't our intent. And that wasn't the intent of the people that we'd been talking with. We sincerely thought that this was in keeping with the character of the building. We sincerely thought that it was, um, a way to use the building that stands vacant, um, nearly six and a half days a week. And, um, wanted to be able to use that, um, in a way that would actually return some value to the neighborhood, um, in light of, uh, young children that would be in that neighborhood wanting to have, um, daycare, um, close to their homes. Families that would like to have a safe environment for their children close to their homes. We thought we were providing that opportunity. Still like to provide that opportunity.
You know, one of the observations that I would make is that there seems to be a disconnect between what the neighbor's understanding of what your intentions are and what your intentions are. And one of the things that I learned from Professor Anderson many years ago, who wrote, literally wrote the book on zoning law, um, was that one of the most important aspects of any land use consideration and application is the relationship between the applicant and the neighbors, which sometimes needs to be fostered. And might I suggest to you, since it was suggested that there were a number of neighbors who would like to address us, who were in some confusion over the, whether it was going to be heard tonight or Wednesday night, and the somewhat disconnect between what you're indicating your plans are and what the neighbor's understanding of those plans are. My suggestion might be that you, uh, adjourn your application to August. And between now and August, invite a wider group of neighbors to your facility to review with them, perhaps introduce them to, uh, what it is that you're, uh, planning in detail so that whatever information is out there is at least information that is consistent with the information that you want to have out there. And, um, that might be something that you would like to, uh, to consider. Also, I have, I, I will commend you, this is the best piece of financial information that we've received that I can recall in relation to a use variance application on the first go-around. But I do have some questions about whether, as I indicated initially, whether or not the financial information that you've provided to us relates to the issue of the reasonable rate of return of the use of the property. As opposed to a reasonable rate of return on the operation of the church, which I think are two different things. And I understand that, like all, uh, churches, I think in Arondiquay for the most part, uh, attendance is declining. Uh, I think it peaked in about, uh, October of, uh, 2001. And then it's been going down again, suddenly increased then as I recall, and then it's been declining since then. But, uh, you might, I, I would like to see you address as well that the question of the reasonable rate of return of the use of the property. And one of the questions that was raised in the public hearing was what other uses and what rate of return, uh, would be, would be possible to be realized from the property? And in the discussions that you hopefully will have with your, your neighbors, I think one of the awesome, one of the other things that come up is were the church not to be able to succeed? What likely would be able to occupy that building and realize a reasonable rate of return? Because if a congregation was not able to purchase the building and it sat there vacant for sale for a period of time, that in itself could go a long way towards providing that financial piece for a use variance. And we have had, uh, applications where former places of worship have been turned into other, uh, uses because of the fact that churches could not viably continue to exist in those structures. And that could be a, a real concern, uh, and I have, would have no idea what could be there, but, um...
Well, we were aware of one of those applications, specific to the town of Arondiquay and a church being transitioned into a dentist's office. And, um, you know, maybe out of night... And, um, you know, maybe out of naivety...
Probably wouldn't work at your facility.
Yeah, maybe out of naivety that we thought, um, what we were offering as a family-friendly, neighborhood-friendly use of a building in its consist, in its current character, without construction, no fences proposed, uh, no stationary lawn, uh, equipment proposed, that we were bringing forth a use that was not as disruptive as, uh, sale of property would be to another commercial establishment, which we don't believe belongs in that area. We are not about making money. We're about sustaining the work that we do. And, uh, we are not about creating another commercial establishment. We're not in the, we're not in the business mind frame. And if, uh, if a daycare wasn't to succeed, we're not going to open a grocery store. We're not going to put in a pharmacy. That, that's not the plan and that's not the, the thought behind this. It was to, to try to find a use that was consistent with the character of the building and consistent with being a member of a neighborhood. And, uh, we thought we had, um, an opportunity to raise $15,000 a year over the school year, trying to attract kindergarten, uh, children that are in half-day circumstances. So, I, I appreciate your suggestion, though, to, to host a meeting that would give us an opportunity to invite the neighbors to hear, you know, more specifically about our interests in that regard.
Is that something that you're interested in doing?
Absolutely.
All right. And, and then what we'll do is we, we will consider it in August. So, anyone who wasn't able to be here today can come then. But hopefully, between now and then, you'll have had an opportunity to discuss this and, and exchange some information with your neighbors and listen and talk to each other. And also, though, if you, when you come back, if you could, um, focus more on the rate of return from the use of the property as opposed to the church's financial operating. And that would involve things such as the amount that the property was purchased for, the upkeep of the property on an annual basis, and what the value of the property is, which would probably involve some kind of a, a real estate, uh, expert who could tell or provide some indication as to what the value of the property might be for permitted uses, uh, within the R1 zone. And, uh, that, I think, would more closely address. But I, I, as I said, the information that you did provide is far more than what we've usually gotten. And I want to thank you for that.
Well, and I, you know, I, and maybe we can talk about this offline, but, um, the rate of return on the property, we didn't see as being in the best interest of the neighborhood and out of the character of the neighborhood. Now, um, we understand too that the sale of property to be purchased by yet another church, um, we believe that that, they'll confront the same thing we're confronting.
Well, and one of the things that you might, uh, do, I, I recall in the application that we had with respect to the property on Culver Road, was one of the things that we were given information from a Realtor about the number of churches that were in the market for a new location, which didn't match up to the number of locations that were available from churches that were no longer, uh, operating.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, and certainly we can, um, pull together some of those facts.
Okay.
So, I appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Great.
We'll move on to the next case.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1307-7. Upon the matter of request by Jane M. Adams for a special use permit to harbor up to four ducks with fenced run and sheds pursuant to Section 253-70 of Town of Arundacoit Code on premises 2373 Titus Avenue in R2 Residential District.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Jane Adams. I live at 2373 Titus Ave.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth? The whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm asking for the, I guess it's special use then, not really a variance, to have four ducks. And, um, I actually already have the ducks because I didn't know at first that I had to put in the application. And, uh, when I came in and talked to them about it, uh, she said, just fill it out, get your application in, and we'll go from there, so, um...
I was quite surprised to see them already in the backyard when I went there Sunday.
Uh, they've been there since Memorial Day weekend, so it's been about a month. So, I built the little run, you've seen that. I have some pictures too, but it's on the map and everything that you already got with the application. They recommended maybe send, bring in a picture of the back of the lot to show where, I already had the garden shed, and I built a little run for them next to it. I've got a couple of pictures, if you want to pass those, yes. Looking at the back of my lot, and it shows the fence behind. I actually, two neighbors, um, come up to the middle of my backyard, so there's two half, you know, lots back there. So, again, I, you know, did my research on the ducks and, um, it's part of my garden, I, I consider it part of my permaculture in my garden, trying to grow more of my own crops, um, like this other young lady. And I consider ducks because I, I just like ducks, I guess, better than chickens. They will lay eggs, that's part of my long-term plan, hopefully. And, um, that they would eat insects in the garden and slugs. You know, so, uh, that's the main thing. I've looked into, like, the other issues of, um, if they're noisy, they're not very noisy. They don't make a lot of noise. They're three, or they're four female ducks, of course. Whether or not there's a smell and that's, like, keeping it clean and that type of stuff. You mentioned rodents. Biggest rodents we have all around my yard right now are the moles or voles that make all the tunnels. And I know that a lot of the neighbors seem to have that issue. I have their feed in a metal garbage can in the shed, so that's tightly closed, so I don't think any rodents can get into their feed. And I just put the food out, like, 15 minutes in the morning for them to eat usually and pick it up. So, that, it's not a lot of food sitting around. I knew they, I do kick it out of the feeder, but it's just the way they eat. So, I guess, I don't know if you have any other questions for me. I do have, um, I've talked to my neighbors, a few of them at least. The people on either side of me are not opposed to it. And my one next-door neighbor, James Fletcher, sent a letter. Hopefully you have that. He gave me a copy as well.
Yes, he was talking about the girls, as you first...
Yes, the girls. And I have another letter tonight that one of my other neighbors gave me, or gave to the, my next-door neighbor to bring in tonight. This is Jay Wally that lives two doors down on Titus. He says he is not opposed. And, uh, I guess that's it. Is there any other questions or anything you have for me? I don't think they're, they've been a problem because nobody's complained to me about them, so... I don't think they hear them or have had any issues with them yet.
Well, again, much like the chickens, my concern here is any health concerns. As I say, I, I'm not sure about ducks, but, you know, I, I referenced some of the information that's been published by the CDC with problems with chickens. I assume it's the same with ducks, but I don't know that. And then, of course, is the attraction of rodents or, you know, out-and-out rats are, are common, uh, in, in chicken areas. Again, I assume that the attraction would be the same for ducks. I don't know that, but that is a real concern. And I guess the third thing would be is, do we really want to, uh, continue to attract animals into our town versus, uh, do they belong out in the more rural areas? And frankly, which is where I come from, frankly. So, I have a concern there.
Well, I, like I said, I think it's, for me, it's part of my garden that they would, you know, be a pest control, a natural pest control as opposed to chemicals and pets as well. I mean, the girls out, they all have names. You know, so they're, I'm trying to have them as pets as well. And hopefully, on a rare occasion, you know, maybe once a week or something, that I could let them forage around the yard, and that's when they would eat the bugs and stuff, you know? So, but only, only when I'm there to supervise that as well, so...
They don't fly, these ducks?
Yeah, this is a particular breed, Indian runner duck, that does not fly, right.
You didn't inquire as to, uh, the town allowing them before you built this?
Well, I had, when I talked to the woman when I put in the application, I said, well, I had seen on the TV before somebody asking for chickens, and I thought if it was approved once, then it was an okay thing to do. And then I said, okay, I better check to make sure. And she said, no, you have to ask, each case has to be approved, so... Then I applied. I wasn't aware that, you know, you had to do it, so...
Any other questions? I guess only, I, I, they are kind of an unusual duck. I'm curious just how you chose that particular...
Um, just, well, a couple of things. I've seen them on TV before, that that was a use in a garden for pest control. And, um, also, the manure can be composted for the gardens as fertilizer. And then the, that they lay eggs, they do lay eggs pretty prolifically as chickens. And, uh, because they were the variety that doesn't fly, that was the main thing. They could, they wouldn't get out of my fenced-in yard. So, my backyard is fenced, but I also have a run that has a top on it as well, and that's more for any other critters getting into them, so...
Thank you. Any other questions? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Step up to the podium, please give us your name and address.
My name's Amy Dubach, and I'm at 2392 Titus Ave, which is across the street towards 590, just two houses. I look out and see her front yard every day. And, um, she's a very responsible homeowner who takes pride in her yard. It's the nicest little house we have in our little crazy neighborhood. And, um, and even, like, with the chickens and stuff, it's like we have people that take pride in their home, they're going to take care of their things. I have no problem with that. I happen to live next to somebody who has three dogs and never cleans her yard, so that's a bigger problem to me than these ducks and chickens. So, um, I just want to be for it because, like I said, she's the nicest house in the neighborhood and keep her happy, she'll keep her house happy, and we'll be happy looking over at her, at her house. So, good luck.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Step right up, if you can give us your name and your address, please.
My name is Martha Putrovsky, and I live at 2377 Titus Avenue, which is next door to the east of Jane here. I have seen the ducks, I have heard the ducks when I'm in the backyard picking my, um, mushrooms. But other than that, I have no problems whatsoever with her having ducks. She had two dogs at one time, and they were no problem. She always takes care of her animals and her garden. So, um, John says he never hears the ducks because he's working on the cars or what have you. I have more problem with the neighbor across the street with the motorcycle and the dogs than I would with Jane, with her ducks, which I have seen her little shed and the way she keeps her food in that metal container. I have no problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Does the applicant wish to say anything further?
Um, I did want to ask one question when you mentioned, when the young lady was here about chickens, about having a kind of a test period or revisited in a year, you know, that I wouldn't be opposed to that. And I think the way I've, what I've researched about the ducks, it said they're going to not lay eggs till they're about five or six months old and that they lay for a year and a half to two years. So, I kind of think maybe three years is their life expectancy. I mean, by that time, they're matured. If they're not laying eggs anymore, they wouldn't be as much use to me. So, I'm thinking it isn't a long, long-term project, but if it works out well, I would probably, you know, maybe like to get more and replace them in the future. So, how does that work with you of, you know, what would the re, revisiting time period be?
Well, for those applications that we've approved, we've approved up to a certain number. And if the number that, I recall one case of chickens where the number exceeded the number that we approved, and we indicated that she would only be allowed to keep those that she owned at the time. But if the number were to be four and you were to lose three of them, then you would be allowed to replace three.
To keep up to four maximum, right?
If that's what the...
Right, if that gets approved.
If that were to be approved, with, that's what we've done in the past.
And then my other question, you mentioned you had to get an approval of four votes. So, my question is, how many, does everybody who's here vote tonight?
Mr. Orelli does not vote.
He does not vote.
There's five of us here tonight.
You've only got five people here.
That's correct.
So, was the option of postponing the vote until August, when more people would be present, still an option or not?
That is an option.
Well, I, I guess I'm thinking that may be a worthwhile consideration, I don't know.
Okay.
You tell me.
That would be fine.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. Next case on the agenda is case number ZB 1307-8. Upon the matter of request by Charlotte Mel, Melnick, for an area variance to maintain a six-foot-high dog-eared fence with unfinished side of fence facing adjoining properties on premises 184 Deirdre Drive in R1 Residential District. I apologize.
This is Charlotte Melnick, the actual homeowner, and I'm Renata Melnick, uh, Renata Melnick White, resident and instigator, power of attorney and instigator concerning this matter.
Okay, so if you could both raise your right hands, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes. I also, um, was a little disconcerting as far as the procedures concerning my fence. And, um, I had gotten it in, um, before, and put it in the wrong direction before I knew that I had to get the actual permit.
Did you install the fence yourself?
No, um, I did have Fingerlegs Custom Fence install the fence.
So, you had a fencing contractor install the fence? And the fencing contractor that installed the fence...
Didn't ask for, didn't ask for the permit.
Was not, well, didn't ask for the permit and wasn't aware of the restrictions on how to install the fence?
In the town of Arundacoit.
In the town of Arundacoit.
I, I can probably add to, add to that, um, you know, as you've already heard tonight, oftentimes people do things and they don't know what the proper procedure is. And by the time they get here, it's done and they're asking. One thing that doesn't always happen, in this instance, this young lady was cited by the town, um, for not having the permit and for the improper installation. We met on June 25th, uh, in the town court, and she did come in with the permit. So, it's permitted at this stage. It was just a misunderstanding or probably, uh, not a very good job.
Miscommunication with the office and, um...
So, you're, you're, you're legal, other than, other than upside down.
Yeah. And I do have, um, copies of the, um, pictures that, um, might help renew your...
She really is a nice lady. I don't doubt that.
...recollection of the fence and the question? I do have stated, um, and signed, um, statements from my adjacent neighbors saying that they're okay with the fence being in reverse. And also, the reason why we had, um, put the fence in that direction is that the adjacent neighbors have bushes that didn't allow for custom building the fence. It wasn't put in sections like normal. And so, it was nailed directly to the two-by-fours across the, down the, um, both sides of the property lines.
In the, um, letter that you sent to us, you indicated that you would, uh, be willing to have the street side of the fence faced as well so that from the street, it appears as if...
That would be something I would be, um, agreeable to if that, if allowed to... That would be something I would be agreeable to if that, if allowed to keep the sides in, as they are, that I would be agreeable to have that street side faced as well so that does look in more, in keeping with the town's requirements.
I thought that would be a good suggestion when I went by. If your neighbor, if the neighbors, I need, you know, the, the whole purpose of the fence restriction is to keep your neighbors so that they don't have the poorer side of the fence, you know, to look at all the time. If your neighbors on both sides are, are content with that, then, you know, that satisfies that requirement because they're content with it. And obviously anybody who comes in later is going to be aware of it before they come in. So, but the front of the street-
Where everybody sees everything.
Yeah, I really think that needs to be addressed a little more.
I can see your point in, in that regard. Yeah, it is very unsightly when you're driving by.
So if we were to approve it, you wouldn't have any objection to adding a condition that would require the, on the east and the west side that faces Deirdre Drive to be finished with a finishing face?
That would be very, very agreeable to me.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Step right up.
Does that mean that you can put your fence-
You have to come up to the podium.
You have to come up to the podium and-
Okay.
You give us your name and address, please.
My name's Maria Stefano and I live at 164 Deirdre Drive. I just didn't like the way that the fence looked on the front. You know, walking by, we walk a lot and I thought, "What happened? Is that what they do now? You can put your fence up anywhere you want?" It kind of disfigures the whole neighborhood. I don't think it's pleasant to look at. If they don't like to look at it, why would they think somebody else wants to look at it?
Well, and that's why they suggested that they would face the front that faces Deirdre so that it wouldn't be visible from the street.
Right.
So would that be-
For me, that's fine. If the neighbors don't mind it, that's fine. But I think it's very, I don't know why people do things the way they do. What if somebody's going to buy the house? I can see the fence facing the wrong way.
Unfortunately, we run into this fairly often of people who, for one reason or another, aren't aware of the fact that they need a permit or they aren't aware of the fact that fences can only be so high or that they have to face a certain direction, particularly people who are putting them in themselves as opposed to having a contractor or professional install them who tends to be more aware of the fact that there are codes and restrictions. One of the benefits that comes from having our meetings broadcast and repeatedly broadcast throughout the month is that people get to see that we are actually dealing with these things. So that helps them become aware. And, you know, we, as, there have been instances in the past where people have put up fences-
Yeah.
And I'll say this as a warning. There have been people who have put up fences in the wrong direction, who then come to us and asked for a variance and we've denied it. And that means that they have to either take the fence down or put it up properly. So it's not simply that anyone can just put up a fence any way they want to and it'll be okay. That is not the case at all. And the fact that they may incur an expense in, you know, doing it is not something that's going to affect our decision. Our decision's going to be based on whether, under the circumstances that are presented, it's an appropriate thing.
I understand. I just wondered that. I'm glad that they're going to change the front part of the fence because it doesn't look-
It did not look good. That's correct.
No, it doesn't. So thank you for hearing me out.
You're very welcome. Thank you for coming. Is there anyone else that wishes to address this application? All right. Did you wish to respond in any way?
No, and like I said, that's why I suggested in, in my application that I could decide the fence, the street side, so that it would be in more alignment with town ordinances.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll close that hearing and move on to the next hearing.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1307-9. Upon the matter of request by Mark Mitchell for an area variance to construct a deck with less than required rear setback on premises 3793 Culver Road in R1 Residential District.
Hi, my name is Mark Mitchell. I'm the owner of 3793 Culver Road.
If you could raise your right hand, sir. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm requesting a setback variance from the 30 feet required for the rear to 21 feet in order to build a deck. I'm on a corner lot that's very narrow. I don't have much room to work with as it is. And speaking with my neighbors, no one had a problem, especially the ones that are along the property line that would, I'd be requesting the variance for.
I'm looking at the survey that you attached. And am I correct that you have a chain link fence inside that six-foot wooden fence?
No. I, last year, I got a permit and I have a six-foot tall dog-eared fence recessed three feet in along the road, of course, for the town.
So that replaced the chain link?
Yes.
Okay. I was looking at this and it looked like they might be both there.
No, no, the chain link is gone. And the deck that I'd like to build is only going to be the minimal amount, like maybe a foot off the ground because we'd like our privacy too.
So it wouldn't even be visible from the road?
No.
I mean, I couldn't see any part of your backyard at all?
No. That keeps all the animals off from eating my vegetables, too.
Okay. There you go. Any other questions? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing and move on to the last item on our agenda.
Which is case number ZB 1307-10. Upon the matter of request by Carleen Johnson for an area variance to erect a six-foot-high side yard fence exceeding maximum allowable height on premises 16 Birch Lane in R1 Residential District.
Good evening. I'm Carleen Johnson of 16 Birch Lane.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Because of how our property is structured, it pretty much is visible from three sides and in the back where our patio area is, it's pretty much parallel to our neighbors where they have their section. So if we're outside and they're outside, it's like standing maybe six feet staring at each other. So we really want to have privacy in the, in the back area of our yard.
Is there a side from which it's not visible?
Our house is the only thing that blocks it from being visible.
Yeah, but you, I, I, it's pretty much like you're living in a fishbowl.
Very much so.
Outside.
Very much so.
And the only reason that this fence would be necessary is because the, what you would consider to be your backyard, the ordinance considers as your side yard because the narrower part of the property is on Nor Lane Drive and even though your address is on Birch Lane, right?
That's correct.
All right. Any other questions? Anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Anybody wish to speak in opposition to this application? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing. And we will now take a 10-minute recess and we will resume at 9:30.
With respect to, um, let me call the cases in the order by address. The application with respect to 300 Rock Beach Road at the applicant's, uh, with the applicant's consent, that's being adjourned to, um, the August meeting. Is there anyone here from, uh, 285 Avondale Road? Okay. 902 Winona Boulevard I see is still here, although that's the only thing I'm gonna have to do with that. Um, 225 Rollinson Road is still present. 54 Russell Avenue is here. 759 Winona Boulevard with the applicant's, at the applicant's request. That's, uh, tabled to, uh, August. 2373 Titus Avenue is still here. 184 Deirdre is also still here. 3793 Culver is still here. And 16 Birch Lane is still here. So, the first application that we have is with respect to 902 Winona Boulevard, so I do not participate in this. And, uh, we can complete the sheet.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion? Or I can make a motion. It's up to you. I'll make a motion. 902 Winona Boulevard, that we approve this motion based on the criteria that, uh, that will not change the character of the neighborhood. It is a small portion of the fence between two of the houses tucked back in. It is not an environmental issue. The only problem I noticed could have been snow plowing, but they do have a snowplow person that back blades the snow. I don't think it'll be a substantial, uh, variance, because they're only looking for two, maybe three sections of fence to come up alongside of the house. It is a self-created problem because they do want a little more security, but based on that criteria, I believe we should approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we got... And, motion approved.
Mr. LaPerry?
Mm-hmm.
Um, just for the record, um, it's a type-two action.
I knew that.
Pursuant to seeker.
Okay. Type-two action pursuant to seeker.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. I'll give you this right back.
The next application is with respect to 225 Rollinson Road. This is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion that we approve the application, uh, based on the following findings. The, um, first finding is that the benefit of having a pool there cannot really be achieved by any other means, based on the location of the property and the overline, overhead power lines. That placement of the pool where the applicant has requested will not, uh, pose any undesirable change in the neighborhood. The request is not substantial, it's only moving, um, a few feet, and, uh, would not have any adverse impact on the environment. And whether or not the matter is of the difficulty self-created is not really relevant, uh, I think, in this application. Particularly because the zoning board approved the application previously.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Five votes in favor. No opposed. No abstentions. Two members of the board are absent.
Thank you.
I hope you get it put up for your kids. Next application pertains to 54, uh, Russell Avenue. This is a type-two action for, uh, seeker purposes. I would make a motion that we grant the variance, uh, subject to certain conditions. First, I would, uh, the first condition would be that the, uh, variance would be effective for a period of one year, uh, and would need to be renewed, uh, at the hearing to be held on the first Monday in August of 2014. And the second condition would be that the, uh, applicant must construct and maintain the coop and the feed in accordance with the information that was provided, uh, by the applicant in accordance with the, uh, or as part of the application. And the third condition would be that the, uh, town, uh, undertake an inspection of the, uh, property, uh, within the next six months to see, uh, whether or not the, uh, actual, uh, existence of the hens and the, uh, coop is, uh, being, uh, maintained in accordance with those conditions. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I'm wondering if we should add a requirement that they take specific action to deal with the potential for rodents coming from the dumpsters behind? That, uh, if they come back in another year, that they would have to show that they've done something to actually specifically try to deal with those rodents? Topic for conversation.
I, I think that's a reasonable condition.
Is it, uh, because they've only asked for four?
Oh, we would limit it. That would be another condition, it would be limited to a maximum of four.
Yeah. One of the, one of the, the things I've noticed is with regard to that, um, the submission of what they proposed to build, um, is obviously pre-built for this purpose, and it really builds in a lot of those precautions already. And I only know that because we've sat through a lot of chicken applications.
All right. So the conditions are, one, that's for a period of one year. Second is that the construction and maintenance is in, or as, uh, set forth in the application. The third, uh, is that there are a maximum of four hens. The fourth is...
Do they ensure there are precautions against rodent infestations, specifically from right behind the property?
Ensure and report on rodent infestation effort or control. And the fifth was a six-month inspection, uh, to be undertaken by the town. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Four votes in favor, one opposed. No abstentions. Two members of the board are still absent. The next application concerns the property at 2373 Titus Avenue. This is, uh, a type-two action for seeker purposes.
I'll, uh, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Pretty much the same as the previous motion. That we approve this based on the, um, I don't think it hurts the character of the neighborhood, I don't think it'll be an environmental impact, I don't think it's substantial. Um, it is a self-created problem because she does want them and for her garden. Um, I do realize that, uh, we've approved some of these in the town and not approved others. I believe the space is very important, and the amount of animals that there are and the types that there are make a difference also. Uh, four, four ducks, in my opinion, is not a large issue. Um, her neighbors, again, um, like her and the way she keeps her house, I think that is a very important factor in any of these situations when you're, have animals, if you're taking care of your home and you're taking care of your animals, it's a, a, a plus for the town of Aronique. Um, you know, if you're not taking care of your home and you're not taking care of your animals, then, you know, we have the right to deny applications. But this isn't the case with this person, so I believe, uh, we should approve her application. Four ducks, um, to be visited, uh, the same way after a year, I believe you said?
Well, the, so if I understand your, your motion, it would be to grant the special use permit for a period of one year to be revisited at the first meeting in August of 2014, for a maximum of four ducks to be maintained as represented in the application to be inspection, uh, inspected, uh, by the town within six months, and also a report on rodent control?
Probably not.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
The application is approved. Four votes in favor, one opposed. No abstentions. Two members of the board, uh, remain absent. The next a- application is in relation to 184 Deirdre Drive. This is also a type-two action for, uh, seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to?
I'll make a motion that we approve the variance, uh, as requested, uh, as I don't believe that granting of the variance will have an adverse effect on the character of the neighborhood. And, uh, I don't believe, uh, it is self-created, but I don't think it disturbs the neighbors considering the bushes that are on both sides of the fence, and having no objections towards that. I believe the variance, uh, will not have an adverse impact on the environmental conditions of the neighborhood, and, uh, with the condition that, uh, the two fences that are now facing the street, uh, be reversed to have the good side facing out.
Or to be faced?
Uh, towards the street.
No, you said to be reversed, either to be reversed or to have facing added on the front so that it's?
Right.
A finished side to the street.
So that the good side is, right, facing the street.
Okay. I would second that. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Four, five votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. Two members of the board remain, uh, absent.
Obviously, I, uh, Russ usually likes to throw a little something extra in at the end of, uh, certain cases. This, I think, would be, uh, one of those cases where people that are getting fences, uh, need to check, because obviously the fencing companies don't, uh, pay attention. They need to check with the town, um, on, uh, what fence, how the, how it's put up, the heights, where it can be located. It's very important, as opposed to letting the fencing company just do it and, uh, worry about it later.
And the other thing is, the car, uh, pointed out to me, the fencing contract with, particularly to that application, put that burden back onto the homeowner. So it's important that the homeowners be aware that the fencing company is, is not taking any responsibility for that, and, um, they cannot guarantee and don't guarantee that if you don't do it in accordance with the restrictions, that you won't be told to change it, as has happened in the past. And I also realized that I forgot to put in findings with respect to the special use permit motion that I made. I should know better. For, um, 54 Russell, that the, uh, findings that I would propose would be that, uh, it will not have an adverse impact upon the neighborhood because the lot is, uh, of a substantial depth in excess of 200, uh, feet, as I recall, the, um, property backs up to a commercial property, and, uh, from the vantage point of where the, um, coop for the hens is going to be located, uh, it is not, uh, within clear sight of either of the neighboring, uh, homes and the, uh, um, neighbors that would be most affected, uh, on either side indicated that they were in support of the application, as did other neighbors in the proximate area. And the concerns of the neighbor who spoke against granting the permit were of a generalized nature, which is why the, uh, application is being granted for a period of one year, uh, as opposed to a longer period, in order that we can assess whether or not those generalized concerns ripen into, uh, other concerns that are, would be, uh, require further, uh, action and consideration on our part. Is that, those who voted in favor, can we all approve that, uh, those findings?
Yes.
All right. All right. So those findings are approved. Uh, the next application pertains to 3793 Culver Road. This is also a type-two action, uh, for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to, uh, this application?
I'll make a motion that we grant the variance as applied for, based on the following findings. Um, allowing the deck where it's being requested will have no undesirable change in the neighborhood. It is a minimal, uh, request, so there'll be not a substantial change. There'll be no adverse impact on the environment, and, uh, the benefit of having a deck cannot be achieved by any other reasonable means, based on the irregular shape of the lot.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Five votes in favor, no, no votes opposed, no abstentions. Two members of the board remain absent. Next, uh, application pertains to 16 Birch Lane. This is also a type-two action for, uh, seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make an app, uh, motion with respect to this application? Hearing none, I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, variance, uh, based upon the find, following findings of, of fact. The, uh, there will be no, uh, adverse impact upon the character of the neighborhood. It will continue to be a residential neighborhood, uh, in which, uh, the neighbors, uh, enjoy their, uh, yards. The alternatives that don't require a variance do not exist because of the fact that this is a corner lot, and the house is oriented to the, uh, longer, uh, side of the property as opposed to the front of the property, and therefore, under the town code, what would be regarded by any occupant of the home as the backyard is considered as the side yard, and in the absence of a fence, uh, the, uh, of the height of at least six feet, it's impossible, given the, uh, layout of the house in relation to the property, to have any, uh, privacy whatsoever in any area of the, uh, yard. It is not a substantial request, um, and it is, uh, will have no adverse physical or environmental impact. It is not self-created, it is created by the configuration of the lot and the sit- It is not self-created, it is created by the configuration of the lot, and the situation of the house on the lot, and the particular, uh, rules that apply to corner lots. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, five votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, two members of the board remain absent. The next item is the application pertaining to 285 Avondale Road. This is a type-two action, uh, for seeker purposes.
I would like to make the motion that we
Okay.
Approve the, uh, application and grant the variance as applied for, for Jason and Amy Flack, uh, based on the following findings. The, there will be no undesirable change in the neighborhood by putting this additional fence in an extremely large front yard. They're actually going to enhance the neighborhood. The, uh, request is not substantial, and it will have no, uh, negative impact on the environment, uh, or the physical nature of the, uh, of the area, except, again, to enhance it. The benefit cannot be achieved by any other means, benefit of breaking up that large half-acre lot, and while it might be self-created, uh, that is not really relevant to the benefit this will have.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Five votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. Two members of the board remain absent. At the, uh, well, actually, with the consent of the application, with respect to, uh, 300 Rock Beach Road, this is a type-two action for, uh, seeker purposes. I would move that with the applicant's, uh, consent, this matter be tabled, based on the fact that no notice was properly given, uh, to the residents in the neighborhood and those interested individuals who would be passing by, as a result of the fact that the sign, which is supposed to be displayed in front of the property, was not displayed, and, uh, would therefore, uh, table the application until such time as proper notice was given, uh, to all of those who might be interested and otherwise not informed.
Second?
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. The, uh, motion, any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, five votes in favor, no opposed, no opposition. Two members of the board remain, uh, absent. The last application is pertaining to 759, uh, Winona Boulevard, uh, and this matter was adjourned at the request of the applicant, as opposed to being tabled by the board, so that will just be noted as being, uh, adjourned at the applicant's That concludes the applications that are, that are on our docket. Before this evening, we have, with the materials that were distributed to us, I believe we received three sets of minutes from previous meetings. The first set of minutes pertained to the meeting on April 1st, uh, 2013. Did everyone have an opportunity to review, uh, those minutes? Does anyone note any, uh, changes or corrections that would need to be made? Seeing none, I would move to approve the minutes of the, um, meeting conducted on April 1st, 2013. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Five votes in favor, uh, no votes opposed. The, um, next set of minutes was, uh, pertained to the meeting on May 6th, 2013. Did everyone have a chance to review those minutes? And, uh, does anyone have any corrections or changes that wish to be noted? Seeing none, I would move that we adopt the minutes of the May 6th meeting. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Sir? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Carries five votes in favor, and two votes opposed. With, with respect to the minutes of the meeting of June 3rd, I believe that we have a situation where two of us were absent who were present tonight, two of us who were present on June 3rd are absent tonight, so that would only leave three who would be able to consider it, so we will adjourn consideration of the minutes of the June 3rd meeting to the August meeting, when hopefully there will be four people who were present in June who are present in August. And that, I believe, concludes all of the items that are before the board. Is there any opposition to adjourning? Seeing none, we are adjourned.